Okay, welcome back. We're gonna go ahead and move into the next chapter of our episode that we're gonna meet with the clerk, Charles Rhodes. Welcome, Charles.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all the commissioners for allowing us to present what we feel is is a very important upgrade to our jury systems. Um, we're asking for uh to go from uh our our gen uh our gencer to our web web gen which will um upgrade everything dealing with our our jury systems. Um, let me real real fast, um, this uh the system that we're using now was um established in oh three. And oh third or in twenty thirteen, we received it. Uh during that time, it was adequate at that at that point. We were paying approximately ten thousand dollars a year for annual maintenance on something that wasn't maintained. Uh, um, and consequently, it caused problems for our jury manager and and sitting uh with me is a is a the backup uh juror manager, which is Jasmine Blair, and she she is going to be uh uh sitting.
Oh, Charles, you uh accidentally muted yourself. You said she is going to, and then you fell off.
There you are. Okay, thank you. So if I if I miss something, which often I do do, uh then she will pick it up. But right now, what we're asking for, we did the calculations as far as the licensing, etc. We're looking, we're we're asking uh the commissioners to approve um fifty five thousand six forty, which will cover our our setup, our annual fees, everything, our licensing, etc., for three users. Um, and that that's basically uh what we're looking for. Um, the one thing that uh that uh um I've wanted to uh share with you is the um the first is going to be the forty seven three eighty. And then if to for us to get our what we call our summons uh arm, uh it's going to be eighty two sixty. So so the the amount that we're gonna need for the year of twenty twenty five is fifty five thousand six forty.
So, uh, Charles, what is this? Uh, you're gonna be dropping the other one. Uh, what is the difference per year, just out of curiosity? Do you know that?
If you don't, we I do, I do. Um, the annual maintenance we were paying was uh ten thousand. Well, they put ten thousand four hundred on this, but it's actually ten thousand dollars and four dollars.
Okay.
Thousand and four dollars. Um, so um the difference between that and to be fully uh updated is i- i- it will go to a full eighteen thousand. Um, but we will have a current system.
Okay, so it's an increase of eighteen thousand a year after
No, it's it's an increase of eight thousand.
Eight thousand, okay. All right, I'm I'm supportive of Commissioner Trask. Where are you at on that?
Yeah, it sounds great, and um I know and I know that you took it before the IT Steering Committee, so appreciate you doing that as well. So I'm I'm a I'm a go.
Charles, do you have it in your budget now, or are we gonna
Uh, we added it into our budget. The only thing is, I added fifty three thousand. And um and I discussed that with with Jen, because that's what we thought it was going to be. But then when we started looking at the they submitted uh uh our arm that was incorrect. Um, and we needed the summons. Um, uh, we got into a situation where we were uh off by about uh about two two grand. So that that's that's where the difference is.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer, uh, are we gonna need to do a budget supplemental this year on their this year's budget, or what do we have going there?
Yes, this would definitely need to be a budget supplemental this year. And um this quote doesn't include sales tax, so I just wanted to say that um the total is closer to sixty one thousand with sales tax.
Okay, I'm still good and supportive, uh, and then you'll put that on uh for our next uh modification of the budget. Commissioner Trash, you're still comfortable?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's about time that Mason County catches up, right?
Yeah, we're about, uh, to be honest with you, commissioners, we're about a hundred years ahead of being behind.
All right, uh, so we're gonna go ahead and move it forward, Charles. Uh, do you have anything else for us?
I do not. Uh, Jasmine, you have anything?
Thank you.
We we are. Thank you very much. Uh, one thing I do wanna, I do wanna share with you. Um, and this was uh just on the last on the last uh jury trial we had, um, Jasmine was trying to, you know, input the information so that we could get ready for payroll and all that good stuff. And uh it it crashed on her, the old system. So instead of taking what we we expected an hour and fifteen minutes, took almost five hours.
Yeah, no fun.
Save a lot of money in a, you know, for not only for the county, but for uh for, you know, um
Time, time. Time is money.
Time and aggravation, right?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
And we pay a lot of money to get rid of aggravation, so.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. Absolutely do.
Commissioner Trask, do you have anything for the clerk?
No.
All right, thank you, Charles. Uh, we'll get it on the agenda. Thank you.
Oh, God bless y'all. Thank you.
All right, next up, I have Public Health, Dave Wyndham.
Bye. There we are. So, uh, good morning, and I'm going to turn it over to Melissa.
Commissioner Trasky were looking down when he was high fiving.
Oh.
That's why we're laughing.
Oh, I always miss the fun stuff.
Yeah. Hi, Melissa.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm really excited to bring this item forward. Um, we've been discussing this for some time as we've developed this expansion to our substance use mobile outreach program. Um, so as you know, we are proposing to expand our current activities by incorporating a home service model. Uh, we'll be delivering the same services that we already do with the uh addition of clinical services. So we have harm reduction, naloxone, hygiene and wound care supplies. Um, the clinical services will include STI, HIV, and hepatitis C screening and linkages to follow-up care. Um, as well as referrals and warm handoffs to prevention services, substance use disorder or mental health treatment, medical, and any other social and recovery support services that people may need. Um, this expansion will really allow us to broaden our reach and serve people who are currently having difficulty accessing our services as they currently are. So as a rural county, uh, transportation is probably um the biggest major barrier for people. Uh, many other people already experience mobility challenges, and I think with this population, um, they just simply need support, uh, more support to access these services. So by bringing these services to them where they are, we will be able to reach a population that is categorically more vulnerable and at a higher risk of overgoes. Um, who would otherwise not have access um to the critical services that they need. Um, attached in the packet, we have a detailed description of the expansion proposal as well as five years of data that we've collected from the current program just to support the the need for this expansion. Um, safety is, of course, uh, probably the number one priority for any type of programming that we conduct in the field at locations outside of our organizational setting. We already have policies and procedures in our department for delivering services outside of the office. Um, however, we did develop more robust policies and procedures that are specific to our substance use mobile outreach program. Um, and we worked very closely with risk management as well as legal, just to ensure that our policies and procedures adequately address all of the safety and legal concerns for this type of program. Um, and finally, this proposal has been briefed to the Mason County Board of Health, uh, which gave us the blessing to bring it forward to the county. So we're just looking for approval to implement this expansion. Um, and we'll be ready to begin delivering services as soon as staff can complete all of the required safety trainings.
What do you think, Commissioner Trask? Are you on board with this? I know you are.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Um, I know that safety was was one of my biggest concerns for this. Um, you know, and 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 just now I saw Nicole pop on. Did we bring Nicole into Nicole and Tim into the conversation as well?
We met with, um, I know Christina worked very closely with with Tim and Nicole as she was developing things, and we actually had a meeting with them to go through it line by line. There are some things that are still pending. Um, there are a couple of union issues that there may be concerns with, so um, we're we're working on that right now, but otherwise, according to legal, it is solid.
Yeah, well, I was looking at some some tracking software that would increase the level of safety, I think. Um, and we're just looking at that considering the hip, but uh implications of having that too. So um, so we're we're getting some answers on that.
Yeah, I I I love the idea, and I know that you had a meeting, um, was it Thursday, with um other providers like, uh, did you talk to Bo? Um, Bakken, and was he at that meeting?
Yes, uh, we had North Mason Regional Fire Authority, which has the Mobile Integrated um Health Program as well as Mason Mason Health, and who else was there, Dave? I don't remember.
Yeah, we had Joyce was there, uh, North Mason Health was there, us, um, Mason Health.
Commissioner Netherland as well.
Yeah, that's right.
The big ugly guy in the corner, that was me.
And so every everything is worked out. So I know that one of the other concerns was um crossing over, you know, not duplicating services.
Right.
And so was that discussed?
Yes. Oh, oh, yeah, we uh we we kind of dug into that at length, and there's more gaps than there's gonna be overlap.
So And the ability to move it from one to the other because of it. That's I found that to be a beautiful part of this. Uh, uh, literally, they can do handoffs to each other, back and forth, not just from us out. It can come back and forth, which is important.
So and we we rolled that into the discussion of electronic health records as as part of the larger discussion and getting on the same health record that uh if the uh Peninsula Community Health uses and that North Mason Fire uses. Uh, if we have the same health record, then we can share uh health information across that platform. Uh, and then we'll have to export to if we want to do something to Mason Health, but there's Athena is a is the HR that the other two use, and it might be beneficial for us to use it. We're still looking at other EHRs for this type of work, but um as as far as compatibility, that's probably the one that's most compatible with our partners.
Yeah, that seems like that would be an an important step, making sure that you're you're all communicating or able to communicate within each other or to each other.
Yeah.
And no, I think it's a great idea. I I can't wait to see how it how it grows and um and and can't wait to see all the safety measures that you have.
Yeah. One of the things that was that's really gonna be good for everybody is that they pull together the proper way of handling billing between everything. That's a game changer. That makes it so all these types of programs can can live majority on their own. Uh, that's something that gets left out in government a lot, but they're working a lot hard with that, and thank you for uh Mason General for stepping up. Does that really make the difference? So I'm I'm a yes. Uh, sounds like you are as well, right, Commissioner? So let's put it on the agenda, make it happen, and I can tell you personally, I think this is one of the biggest things that's come out of the Health Department years. Uh, if this is done right, and I think it will be, and we protect our people while we're doing it, this is gonna be a big, huge game changer, just like what they've done in North Mason uh with with their uh mobile integrated health. So thank you for bringing it forward. What else you got for us, Dave?
And back to Melissa.
Actually, actually, before we
Um, yes, so as you know
Melissa, hold hold on for one second. Go ahead, Mark. What you got?
Uh, just a just a quick question for Dave and Melissa in terms of tracking the equipment. We 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 do have an application that we utilize out of Public Works to track all of our pieces of equipment, and so um please look into that as a potential, because the the cost of just adding an additional piece of equipment and a tag associated with that piece of equipment may be very different than creating something else.
Well, Dave, I'll go I'll go further than that. I I and I think Commissioner Trask is saying the same thing when it comes to safety. I think we expect that.
Yeah, yeah, one of the things that Marcus that I was looking at was something that could have a panic button on the cell phone. And then and then it's called, there's a man down feature, so if they don't check in by a certain time, uh, the bells and whistles start going off.
Got you. So so something more personal for the individual employee that's going into a residence to provide services.
Right, right. So if if they they feel that they're unsafe, they can hit a button on the phone that says, uh, this is looking a little sketchy, then they can have a full panic button uh that really sets off the alarms for Melissa or whoever else is is uh overseeing the
Okay.
that, so.
All right, Melissa, go go ahead. Now it's back to you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, I think the next item is really quick. Um, as you know, thank you to Kelly and Facilities Crew and Mason Health and IT um for getting us moved into our new location um up by the hospital. Uh, we're getting settled, and we would really love to be able to celebrate this new location, a great partnership again with Mason Health, allowing us to use this building. Um, so we're hoping um to get approval to do kind of a ribbon cutting, open house event sometime. I think the date that we have um potential for is Friday, October eleventh.
Sounds like a winner, Commissioner Trask.
I won't be able to attend, but I think that's a great date.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
All right, do we have anything else for Dave, Commissioner Trask?
Um, Dave, I'm gonna bring this up right now. Um, I had on Commissioner discussion, um, the non NGOs, the non-governmental um organizations, so our nonprofits and things like that. I know one of the things that I'd like to do is continue the conversation about having um, and I know we we've talked about this in the past, and I think Commissioner Netherland, you're you're interested in this as well, but having a um kind of like a hub or something like that, some someplace where um all of our nonprofits can go for additional help or um, is it the Tri-Cities that has?
It's no, it's um uh Northeast Washington has Rural Resources, and Rural Resources covers basically five counties. And it's 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 Community Action Agency, but it has other things besides that. What it does provide is is overhead uh for the NGOs for um, they have CPAs on staff, HR on staff, those sorts of administrative functions that a lot of times are smaller NGOs have a have difficulty with. Uh, and they that's so they all fall underneath that umbrella. And um, it it's a model that that works there, and it it might be something we can explore for here.
I gotta tell you, Dave, uh, when I first came here, there was a specific position, didn't handle the bookkeeping aspect of it, but that that's what it was. That's what it was created for, and it was able to hold all those those groups together and work with them, and they were all friends, and it was an interesting time. Uh, I'd like to see us get back to that, because I do think that that was one of the main roles uh of the position. It just has disappeared and become uh almost adversarial, and it's become uh uh record keeping and enforcement.
Right. Yeah, so this is a method like this would would give them access to, for example, CPAs that would review their invoices before invoices go up either to us or to DOA or to Commerce. Um, and and make sure that everybody's working in a consistent way.
Do they pay a a percent or something like how we build up?
Yeah, so that so the indirect cost would be um part of that indirect cost would go to support the organization. So I've asked Rural Resources to send me their founding documents, so we can share them and maybe do a workshop and kind of talk through this.
I'd be interested.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be a good path forward, so um, Commissioner, if you don't mind, I'd like to have direct David to move forward and start looking at it.
Let's do it. I I'm I'm with her. Let's uh direct direct Dave to start uh looking at it. Uh, you know, half of our problems are through financial, so.
Right. Right, we have we have groups that really have the heart for delivering services, but not always the skills to administrate.
Well, sometimes if you offer that that ability to do the paperwork and and things like that.
Yeah.
It 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 makes their job a little easier. That way they can focus on what they're
Right.
what they're supposed to do and and the things that they excel at, because a a lot of our nonprofits, I would say the majority of them are are, we couldn't help people without them.
Right.
Well, we can. That's if I found out one thing after becoming a commissioner, uh, when I thought that we're gonna save the world by just shifting money, the first thing I learned is that before you could shift money, you gotta have a pot or a pocket to put it in. Without a pocket or an entity to put it in, the money just sits there. There's just no way around that. So I'd say, yeah, that's a pretty wise statement, because there is no other way to do it. We can't afford to do it, that's for sure.
Okay, well, I'll send out a link to Rural Resources, what kind of services they provide. And then as soon as I get those documents in, I'll I'll share those as well, and maybe we should sit down and have a a workshop and and talk about contracts and and like our contracts, we'll start rewriting them beginning of the year, because all of our contracts with our third party folks uh end June thirtieth of next year. So now is the time we we need to dig into this and decide what we're gonna do.
We talked about, we talked about going back out for um you know, kind of opening up those those contract for services to allow other people to other organizations to apply to provide the the similar services here in Mason County. Um, I'm I'm just sitting here thinking about, I'd love to see what that Rural Resources document looks like, Dave, to see how they actually provide those services.
Yeah.
Um, I I know that our nonprofits are working on such a such a small margin um that the turnaround time is super important, right? So I get payroll processed, I submit an invoice to Mason County, can't actually process that payroll until I actually get the check from Mason County reimbursing me for those services. And so I'm thinking about timeline, I'm thinking about um, you know, controls in place for purchasing of of goods and services, but there's another component to that that is the management of the time of those individuals that they're spending on specific programs and and how that's shared with Mason County to ensure that that they are meeting the requirements of the grant and the contract that we have in place. Um, so I'm I'm just a little foggy on how that would work, but definitely interested in looking at potential solutions or at least support services for them.
Okay, I'll get that out.
All right, anything else for Dave? Dave, you got anything else for us?
I think that's it for now.
All right, have yourself an awesome day.
Okay, thanks.
All right, next up, we have support services. Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner. I got uh Mary to go first. She actually has a couple items. I'll let her take care of both the lead pay requests and the um, there's a modification to a union document that we have.
Morning Commissioners, um, as part of our budget process, we have our lead pay annual review. Um, reviewed for ongoing need, essential functions, and financial impact. And attached, there are the six that I received. Um, they're all out of community development. Um, I did reach out to Cal and asked if we could maybe look at the org chart over there if we're needing that many leads. And so she and I have been collaborating on a couple ideas, um, but that is a significant amount of leads in one department. Um, but I will say that as part of the reorg that occurred, you know, with the central services manager leaving, we are saving quite a few lead pays um that we would normally have, so I thought that was a a bonus.
Yeah, I think you know my my opinion on on lead pay.
That's why we're
How many years we've had, you know, how many years have these have these have, we had people in these positions getting lead pay, and if it's, if we've had it for those many years, why is it not why is it we pay and not a a change in title or some, you know what I mean? Um, so I I would appreciate you taking a a deep look into those and seeing how many years they have been. Is it, is it, is is this position supposed to be, you know, is it expected to continue? Um, and and if so, then why don't we change the time?
Yeah, yeah, Cal and I are working on a couple ideas going back and forth, but I didn't wanna, this is part of our budget process, so I just wanted to make sure I got it in front of you in time to tell me to go back and work on it.
Well, and how much of it is gonna end up with it within contracts? So we're gonna create, because sometimes the only way to get over something like this is to create different positions. Now, we've been really strict when it comes to uh to reclassifications, but maybe that's you know, you start, you've done so much since you've come here, but maybe this is the next thing to start looking at uh uh restructuring of positions to create things that are in between, but that would have to be with the unions when it's done. But that's the only way to get rid of these reclasses is to have a position to put them in.
Yeah, I think once we can land on an org chart that Cal is comfortable with and kind of the direction she'd like her department to go in, I think we could come back and see what the commissioners think, and then maybe tackle the union issues if there are any that are gonna come up. But we did have great success with dealing with the union when we did the building official position, which was great. So I think they do understand the challenges over there as well when it comes to, you know, everything that's going on.
So Commissioner Trask, uh, are you comfortable with this?
I am, yeah.
Like I said, when when we started talking about, I just go silent. This this one, this ever since day one, what you got here? So what else you got for us?
Um, okay, so the next one is the Teamsters Local Two Fifty Two Prosecuting Attorney Support Staff. Um, there was some language changes that needed to occur in order to make sure that um the Western Conference Teamsters Pension Plan Trust was going to um work effectively for the employees to contribute to, and so we have attached just a um update to Article um seventeen via MOU.
Yeah, great work on that. Commissioner Trask, are you comfortable with it?
I am, and and I appreciate our attorneys being involved in this as well.
Same here.
Yeah, Tim and Mike were awesome.
Yeah.
What else you got, Mary?
I think that's it.
Okay, Mark, back to you.
Got Kelly to talk about janitorial services contract. Kelly, are you, are you there? There he is.
Trying to get there. Good morning, Commissioner. So what I got uh in front of you is the janitorial contract. Um, it's up for, uh, we'll put it up for a two-year extension. And uh with Building Thirteen coming on board, I need to have an addendum amendment to add that to the contract. Um, that price for that is uh nine hundred and eighty dollars a month, not to exceed eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty. That takes the whole contract to two hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five for the next two, or for the each year for the next two years.
I haven't been getting phone calls of complaints, so uh we had times over the years where we did, so I assume that it's going pretty good for the most part. Drive me a little crazy, because sometimes this lady wants to move my trash can, we have to get up to go around the room to find it and and throw something away, but other than that, that's been good. Commissioner Trask?
It's a scavenger hunt. I like it. Keep them.
I hate to be petty, but when you can't find it, it's like, why would you move it?
I have to find mine at times, too.
Yeah.
So she's not just picking on you.
I I'm just thankful that it's empty and not stinking up my office.
Yeah.
No, I think they're doing a great job, and and I've never heard any complaints about anybody running out of toilet paper, so that's the most important thing.
We all have priorities. Well, Kelly, it sounds like you got a yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, Kelly, before you go off.
Can we make sure that McKinsey doesn't add that to the minutes, please?
So before you go off, each each time we go over these different things where uh where we have this adjustment to the building or this adjustment to the building, I just want you to know that we appreciate it. It it the fact that you save us money, by the way, you've been doing this for all these years. And and on top of that, uh, we get exceptional work. Uh, I still remember when you were the guy on the low end of the totem pole, so to speak, uh, that was doing all the work. Uh, when you moved up to the top, it only got that much better, though. So I just wanted to give you a pat on the back and all your folks, because they do an exceptional job. They really do, way above anything you would expect to be done through uh facilities here. Uh, the most anybody else would have to contract out. You've got a lot of modalities you guys work within, and I appreciate you.
Well, thank you, and I guess I couldn't do it without the team that we have, and the the team below me and the team above me. I mean, I get all the support I need, and so that helps also.
Now you can leave. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
John, are you looking for John? Is it gonna be Diane or John, or do I get to do this one?
Nobody's stepping up. It's you.
I don't see it. What about Cassidy? Cassidy, are you out there?
Oh, here comes Diane.
Oh, there's Diane.
You're off the hook.
Let's make Diane do it.
Okay, I'll do it. Um, it's P U D three, they need to raise the power line out at on Highway three oh Uh, it's PUD three, they need to raise the power line out at, on Highway three oh two, so they need access to our, like North Bay Park. So it's an easement for PUD to replace a power pole.
Oh gosh, do we want them to have power? I'd say yes.
I have to think about it too. Just kidding. Let's go ahead. We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, Diane.
To the rescue.
Always.
So the next item on the agenda is our, our annual take home vehicle requests that we have. Um, didn't see many changes with this. These are vehicles that we, um, allow employees to take home because these employees are the employees that are actually responding to an emergency or things that are happening. Some majority are just out in our Public Works Department. Um, Kelly, Kelly Fraser actually has a take home vehicle and um, I'm super happy that he does because there's often times on the weekends that Kelly's called in and and sometimes when he's not even called in and he'll maybe just drive in and want to get some work done over the, over a quiet weekend and, and still kind of monitor all of our buildings and everything that's going on. So, um, I didn't see any new requests out there, uh, in that list, but
Yeah, I know.
somebody can correct me if I'm wrong.
I didn't see anything new and I was looking through it, uh. I'm good. Let's ready to move forward.
So the next. You're good too, Sharon?
Well, I guess so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, next item I have for you is a letter of support, uh, that PUD one, um, has reached out to the county on. This is time sensitive. So Mackenzie and I are trying to get it turned around fairly quickly. Uh, this is, they're applying for some grants for their
Absolutely. I'm, I'm good with this one. Absolutely. It's a simple one for us.
Yeah, it's very easy.
Yeah, they've been super successful. So I'm impressed with PUD one and what they've gotten.
They're amazing.
Yeah. Yeah. And then I had one other item on the list for, uh, BCRA information and update. Oh, this is the, so I've actually got a final report. I, I submitted to the commissioners, the draft report that we've received from BCRA. So BCRA is the consultant um, that came in and, and helped us work through our jail study, um, kind of talking about what do we need uh, in the future? What type of services do we need in our jail in the future? Where could we locate it? What does it look like? It's like a fifteen hundred page document that I, I shared with you guys. Um, I'm trying to schedule a timeline for them to actually come present it to the board. And I believe that it's going to take them about a half an hour or an hour or so, um. If you had any questions associated with that draft report that you received, or if you had any concerns, I definitely would love to, to hear those upfront. So I can get that information to the team and, and they'd be able to respond when they do present it. And then that's all I had for you.
Commissioner, you have anything, uh, for Mark?
I don't, but I do have something for you.
Oh, there we go.
So, um, um, Dr. Sebby, um, he is, yeah, yeah. I said that to you and to Commissioner um, Shudy and to Mark. There's a meeting on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth at five thirty, and I believe it's up there in, uh, your library in Belfair. Um, there are some things, uh, that, that are going on, and I think it would be great for one of us to go. I will not be able to, cause I'll be at, in, um, Aberdeen at a Pack Mountain meeting.
I'm supposed to be, uh, doing a bond meeting for the school district, but if I have to, I can miss it. Uh, if Kevin can't do it, somebody let me know. I will show up.
Okay.
What, what day was that again, Commissioner Trask?
On the twenty-fifth, so that's Wednesday.
This Wednesday? Yep.
Okay. I'm actually opening up bids tomorrow. I just saw that on my schedule for building ten, so that should be exciting. I'll have information to bring back to you guys here next week.
That should be, that should be, and, and Mark, if, if maybe if, um, Commissioner Shudy's not able to in your board that evening, it might be something that you could look into going to.
Such a nice way of putting it. Come on, Mark, you don't do anything, Dave. Just going nuts.
Yeah, I would be happy to attend. Uh, I just need the details on it. And it sounds like you maybe sent that to me in any email already, Sharon. So I will, I will work with, uh, Commissioner Shudy. And then I'll circle back with, with you, Commissioner Netherland, and we'll go from there.
Find out how long the meetings actually usually are too.
Okay.
Because if it's a shorter type meeting, I could, you know.
Yeah.
But again, it's important. If, uh, Commissioner Trask thinks we should have to be there, one of us should be there. So I have no problem.
Yeah, yeah. Dr. Sebby is going to drop some more information off to me today around one o'clock. And so I'll share that with, um, others. I just think that it's something that we need to keep an eye on. If he's concerned, I think that we should be concerned.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Do you have anything else, uh, for me?
Um, not at this time. Um, I'll give you an update as to, um, the, the meetings that we had with, I was in Ellensburg, um, last week or Wednesday and Thursday. Um, Timber Counting's meetings, uh, they were really, they were, it wa- it was a great meeting, um, lots of information, a ton of information. Um, and then, um, also for the Board of Directors, that was a great meeting as well. Worked on, on how we can bring, keep all thirty-nine counties in, um, WASAC. And so that, you know, they all feel the same importance or they feel the same desire to be a part of our group. And then I was also, I'm also now on the, um, Federal Relations and Issues Committee. Um, there's just a lot going on, so that's, that's it in a nutshell. How about that?
Well, cool. All right. Anything, uh, further?
Uh, just real quick, I wanted to, um, uh, take the opportunity to interfere, to introduce. Uh, we have a new executive assistant here in the Commissioner's Office supporting me. Um, so that her name is Jennifer and I'm going to kind of turn the camera to her. So she's, this is Jennifer for those individuals in the county that, um, come by the Commissioner's Office, you'll see Jennifer sitting outside the front here, super excited to bring her onto the team. Um, and really excited to get some support. So, uh, this is Jennifer.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Welcome. You know, Mark, it's interesting. The more things change, the more things stay the same. Uh, that desk, uh, that's where Diane used to sit.
This desk that I sit at or that desk where Jennifer, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's where it was. That's where, you know, we supply our stuff and
I, I, I often laugh when Kelly Fraser tells me about, um, you know, he's asked to, to make modifications to spaces throughout the county. And so he, uh, we were talking the other day and he said, no, I'd prefer to actually put walls on top of the carpet when he has to put up new walls. He, he says, I don't want to cut the carpet out because I guarantee you that they're going to come back two years later and say, no, I want this office gone. So he has to take it apart. And so if the carpet's still there, then it looks good. So yeah, they've actually incorporated that into their, into how they work around the county, cause they know things change all the time. So uh, and, and, and really appreciate the work that they did and, and getting Jennifer set up them and, and IT were awesome. So thank you.
Yep.
That's all I had for you guys.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second. I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Oh, wait. Yes, tomorrow. Sorry.
I'll see you Wednesday, Thursday. All right. See you guys tomorrow. Bye, everybody.